Good evening, welcome to the July 28, 2021 Regular Business Meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education. Do I have a motion to open the meeting?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. Um, Jean, would you do a roll call, please?
Ms. Mangin?
Here.
Ms. Kozak?
Here.
Mr. DiLorenzo?
Here.
Is Lucy?
Here.
Mr. Puccio?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Ms. Woolton?
Here.
My exits are behind me and to my right.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have one contract, we have a contractual matter as well as an administrative matter to discuss.
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. We are recessed. Thank you. Do I have a motion to reopen the July 28, 2021 Regular Business Meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, Jean, would you do a roll call, please? No problem.
Ms. Mangin?
Here.
Ms. Kozak?
Here.
Mr. DiLorenzo?
Here.
Lucy?
Here.
Mr. Puccio?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
And Ms. Woolton.
Thank you very much. Fire exits are still over there and back there. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have one set of minutes to accept. Those are the minutes from the July 6, 2021 meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. This is now the opportunity for public participation. It appears we do not have any. Thank you. That brings me to the President's Update. Much of the update about what's going on in the district, I will leave to Dr. Wool. It includes lots going on with children and faculty and staff in buildings, which is very exciting. I want to thank all of the members of the Board for sharing their interest in various committees. We will share with the community at our next meeting who will be serving on the Board's subcommittees in the coming year. We, Dr. Le, was Brian going to update on the safety plan? Dr. Le, would you give us an update about the safety plan that was sent out to families and community members?
Sure thing. The, every year the district updates, reviews and updates its district safety plan. This is part of an ongoing process, just to make sure that we're really purposeful and up to date in our protocols for safety and how we respond to emergencies. And the district safety plan was recently reviewed by a committee that included representation from the Board of Education, from all of our employee groups, parent representative, our school district physician, and Harrison Police Department, who have just been outstanding partners to us at every step along the way when it comes to school safety. New York State required that we add a section on pandemic planning to our district safety plan, which we've had some recent experience with, so we were able to update our plan with that information. And that plan has been shared with our community in an email earlier this week, and our community has 30 days to review that plan, and if they have any comments that they'd like to make, the Board will be holding a public hearing before its August 25 meeting. And anybody that has any questions about the district safety plan, of course, can also email me, and my contact information was included in that message as well.
Super. Thank you so much. I also wanted to share with the community that our wrap-up of the 2020-21 athletic program in the Harrison Central School District is available on the district website. It's also been shared with families. In looking at it, I will say it made me recall a year ago, well, a little more than a year ago, at the start of the pandemic, when we had a number of conversations about all of the ways that we were going to continue to support students through the incredibly challenging past 18 months. And one of the ways that we did that was that we incurred, we continued to support and fund our athletic program, even at times when we weren't sure, when it wasn't happening in what we thought of as a traditional way. And looking at that wrap-up, you can see the benefits of that, the number of students we have who are going to be continuing to participate in athletics at the collegiate level, and also just the remarkable number of teams who had academic accolades, all-section, all-league, et cetera. So, thank you for that, and I really encourage people to read through that. In the one, Mr. Galano went at signings, talks often about once a Husky, always a Husky. And we want to congratulate a member of the Harrison community, Dave Salazzo, who was an all-state football player at Harrison High School, and it was just announced that he will be inducted into the Westchester County Sports Hall of Fame at a dinner in the fall. So, congratulations to him. And the last announcements from Low-Hud about athletics were actually in golf. And so, we want to congratulate Tommy Mangan, who was named a Low-Hud All-Star First Team Golf Member of the First Team Golf, sorry, this is a little awkward. He also was named to all-section and all-league.
Might I add, I think he's a ninth grader.
He is a, yes, a rising 10th grader. Leo Mangan was named honorable mention to the Low-Hud as a Low-Hud golf player, and also named to all-league, and Reese Malahy and Aiden Osterker were also named all-league. So, congratulations to them.
It was a great season for the golf team.
It was a great season for the golf team, and special thanks to Phil DeJoy, the coach, who has remarkable success with a small group of players. With that, Dr. Wool?
Very dedicated. You know, I'm so glad you started with our athletic program, as with Mr. Galano yesterday. Speaking of, and actually, Dr. Leidwig came in as well. We were meeting with a young man who graduated, I won't use his name, but it's just a great story. And Brian and I were moved beyond words. He said how he struggled in his first two years here as a student, and then became extremely successful, went on to Springfield, got a degree, and speaks beautifully. He's an aspiring young teacher, and we were giving him some advice on how to navigate his career. But he told us a story about a teacher in the district who stopped him at the end of 10th grade, Mr. Brill, and just said, "You are so much more capable than you're showing." And he shared with us, it was such a great story. He said, "I was in college feeling really successful, and I sat down and I wrote Mr. Brill a letter and said, 'I want you to know that those comments to me changed the way I saw myself.'" And, you know, we tend to forget, coaches and teachers do that every day. I was just so proud of Jacob, but also, there's millions of teachers that can tell that story. But to hear it from the words of one of our graduates and to see firsthand how successful and eloquent this young man has become is just such a credit to who we are as a district. So, thanks for reminding me of that. And our athletic program, as you said, this is a credit to the seven of you, by the way, when many boards were looking for ways to save funds, because in theory there were no athletics, you continued to support our athletic teams. And what we know happened was not about athletics, it was about keeping kids connected to a community, to each other, and those experiences, I think, in many ways, deepened the level of commitment and success that our athletic program had, because if you look at that newsletter, it is astounding how much we achieved in that short season. Certainly a credit to Mr. Galano and Mr. Gonzalez, who did great jobs even keeping the intramural program alive for our kids in those dark days. And while I'm bragging a little bit, Dr. Mulholland, our new Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, and I were visiting programs today, and we went up to the high school. And we saw the entire music department engaged in band camp, chorus camp, orchestra camp, dance camp, kids, other kids, mentoring other kids. It was just an incredible experience, and we see evidence of that. I've had the opportunity to visit all of the summer programs, and I would say to you that I have never in my life been more excited about a summer program. I shared this with the Board individually, but Lisa and I went and we watched kids making roller coasters yesterday at Purchase School. They were really learning math and design, and they were working to create roller coasters. I think their, their actually car was a ping pong ball, but they had to draw it and then design it and put it together. But what was more incredible to me was, in all of the classes that we visited, and Mr. DiLorenzo observed this to me privately, is the kids are coming from all different elementary schools. And what we are seeing is connections and community building across our entire elementary community. Ms. Dandrea was observing one class, and she watched two little boys get really excited to get to know each other, and then she followed them outside and was engaging them in conversation, and they made their moms wait so that their moms could exchange phone numbers, because they wanted to get together outside of school. So, I don't know if the Board recalls, but I'm sure they recall, we had three objectives with our summer learning program. One was learning loss, how do we help kids recover some of what they lost? And we've, we're going to visit Bridges to Literacy again tomorrow, but that's a program that is designed to help. We have a ton of summer programs going on at the high school right now. We had over 90 kids involved in the college essay writing program. What we are seeing is this deep level of participation in ways that we never imagined would occur. I think this week, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of 300 kids participating in summer learning, in a variety of support programs. So, goal number one was learning loss. Goal number two was to re-engage the joy of learning. We're seeing that everywhere. And the third was to build community. We're seeing kids build it without our help, and we're going to also obviously perpetuate that as school reopens and all of our six schools focus on community building. Also want to commend Dr. Leidwig. He's been working tirelessly around the summer on all things COVID. Let me start by saying that he and I are in constant contact with people in higher places that are in charge of the kinds of decisions that should be guiding our thinking about what is safe and best practice. Right now, there are no unequivocal answers to what school will look like when it opens in September, and we are going to continue to study and find out the most effective way to make sure all of our kids can come back to school and stay in school safely for the duration. As we develop new information and become clear about what the guidance indicates, we will share that with folks. We're also constantly pushing out to you information that might be a resource to help you take care of your family. Brian, I think you sent out yesterday or today, would you update us on some of the resources that are available for parents?
Sure. Just to remind parents, students have to meet certain immunization requirements to attend school, and school nurses do a great job in their outreach to families, letting parents know when certain immunizations are due. And we've recently been made aware of a resource for the community. So, for families that don't have health insurance and are concerned about how they might be able to get their child the required immunizations, Westchester County is making those immunizations available at no cost. And those are available for the remainder of the summer, actually, two locations, Mondays and Thursdays in Yonkers and Fridays in White Plains. It's by appointment, and to find out if they're eligible, there's a phone number that we shared, as well as some information in both English and Spanish for our community. And we really encourage parents to use those resources. If they have a doctor, talk to their pediatrician, just make sure that they're up to date on all those required immunizations, so we can welcome kids back to school in September.
Thanks for that. It's a good reminder, because so many kids, because of COVID, were taken off-cycle on their vaccination, so please do that. I know that there's also a COVID vaccine available at those clinics as well. And I understand why some people might be a little bit reluctant, but I can tell you as somebody who's really spent a lot of time reading the research, please get vaccinated. If you are eligible, I implore you to please get vaccinated. I know sometimes what is unknown is scary, but this is the largest vaccination effort in human history. It has the lowest rate of any kind of negative outcomes, and it is so helpful to protect you and your family. Perhaps the most compelling argument I've seen recently was a politician who was opposed to the vaccination. She came close to death, and she is now very much in favor of vaccination. But she said this, and I think it's a good reminder to all of us that our actions affect so many others. She said, "Yes, I survived, but the agony I put my children through and my parents through, just in worrying about whether or not I would survive, if I could do it all again, I would have taken the vaccine." So, help yourself, help your neighbors, help us keep our schools open. The Delta variant is more contagious than prior iterations of this dreadful disease, so please help us by getting vaccinated. Talk to your doctor. If you need a resource, contact our school nurse, they'll be happy to help you find a resource for getting the vaccine at no cost. So, thank you for that. Couple of other things. We, in addition to running a multitude of programs for our children, we are running a multitude of programs for our teachers, and we have also visited a number of those activities, professional development being led by our teachers throughout the course of the summer. We're looking forward, we're just completing the hiring of new teachers. The New Teacher Institute will be the last two weeks of August. It's a very intensive four-day experience for all of our first and second-year teachers. We are so proud of that program. It's been very carefully reconstructed each year, and the Board has seen this. Our second-year teachers, who spend so much time learning their craft in the first year in Harrison, as a culminating project, they spend four days in the summer developing exemplary units, and then they're required to present those units to our first-year teachers, who have just learned about our model, and then evaluate and provide feedback. So, I think we have built a culture very carefully and deliberately that encourages people to share critical feedback in a way that is respectful and helpful to grow. We expect that of the adults. We expect that of children. This is a district that is very proud of its work. When you think about the fact that we're servicing 1,400 children this summer in total, and our total school population is 3,600, that's pretty amazing. It's a, it's a credit to our teachers and their willingness to work throughout the summer. It's a credit to this Board for continuing to support this. We worked quickly when we got federal funds to expand the program. And I particularly want to extend congratulations to Dr. Joan O'Keefe, who has done a phenomenal job, I think we would all agree, Dr. Leidwig, Dr. Mulholland, Ms. Whipple, of running not only an incredible summer school program for the high school, but she has been far-reaching in supporting all of the STEM work that's gone on this summer, and it has been incredible. We had a rocketry club where we had some launching. I know one of our Board members happened to see it in action. Yeah, we saw the rocket launching. We've seen evidence, as I mentioned, at the elementary level of kids doing design and CAD work. So, she has been everywhere. So, Dr. O'Keefe, thank you for going well beyond the title of summer school principal. And I could go on for days, but I shan't. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Wool. With that, I will move on to the personnel agenda, which I will take on consent, unless anyone objects. Seeing no objections. Item one, certificated personnel. A, regular appointment, SED clearance received. B, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. C, extra compensation appointment, SED clearance received. D, extra compensation appointment, SED clearance received. E, summer school appointment, SED clearance received. F, request for leave of absence without pay. G, change of status, Roman numeral two, non-certificated personnel. A, regular appointment, SED clearance received. B, extra compensation appointment, SED clearance received. C, change of status, Roman numeral three, other. A, contracted services provider. B, superintendent of schools. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? I would like to comment on item 3B, Superintendent of Schools. The Board of Education is extremely happy to share with the community that we have negotiated a new agreement with Dr. Wool, which will ensure that he continues as the superintendent in Harrison for the next five years. As the longest, as the longest-serving superintendent in the area, Dr. Wool is eligible to retire and would have the opportunity to lead any district in or out of New York State. The Board is extremely pleased that Dr. Wool has decided to remain here in Harrison. I cannot overstate Dr. Wool's impact on generations of children who have been educated in this district and his impact on the district as a whole. His commitment to the district's mission and values, his vision and his expertise, and his thoughtful leadership and experience, particularly over the past 18 months, have been invaluable not only to our community, but to those in neighboring districts. His leadership is always focused on what is in the best interests of our students, our faculty, and our staff. I know I speak for the entire Board when I say that Dr. Wool's decision to remain in Harrison and lead this district is not only a financial benefit to the district, but ensures that he will train and mentor the next generation of Harrison school leaders. I cannot think of a more exciting way to start off the 2021 school year. Are there any other questions or comments?
Yes. Just actually really well said, Kelly, and thank you for communicating. Just to echo on Kelly's remarks, I would just like to share how pleased I am that the next generation of learners will continue to be supported under Dr. Wool's guidance as we bring the Primary Years Program into all of our elementary schools and really further creating fluidity and a connection for all of our kids as they grow into both middle and high school and they progress through, you know, the district's IB program. And this also ensures continued growth and management of our new leadership, which further really guarantees success for this district's future. So, all good stuff.
Thank you, Kelly.
And if I can add some commentary to that, of course, echo the sentiments of both Kelly and Kelly, but we would be remiss not to acknowledge that at this moment of recommitment to Harrison, Dr. Wool's great achievements over the last 20 years. And as someone who stepped into this at the beginning of this vision and commitment to equity, access, rigor, and adaptability, at a time where it was just a dream, and we were not living it in this community, and fast-forward 20 years, and Dr. Wool has built an organization and a community commitment to amplifying all voices in this community, integrating all perspectives, and ensuring that every child is supported and inspired to learn at the highest levels. And on behalf of all of the children you have impacted in the last 20 years, I'd like to say thank you. And recognizing that at this moment of time, your experience and expertise could lead you to make many different choices where to apply your great leadership, and that you've chosen to recommit to Harrison, we owe you a huge debt. So, just simply, thank you for staying with us.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. With that, I will move on to the administrative report. I will take that on consent unless anyone objects.
Well, I object.
Okay.
I just, first of all, thank you for those incredibly generous and kind words, and I'm a very lucky man. I mean, I would be the first to say that this job is extremely challenging, but I couldn't imagine working with more ethical, committed public servants than the seven of you. I'm so proud of what we accomplished with my incredible team of administrators and faculty, and what we have accomplished over my 20 years. The reason I stay is because we get to do such significant sacred work on behalf of kids. And I've worked in places where that wasn't always the case, and this Board knows that I won't stay one past, one day past a day, then I can't do the right work for kids. But the fact that we embrace it as hard as it is, and Dennis, thank you for the words about the lives that I've changed, but I would just say the lives that we have changed, because, well, I had the vision, none of that happens without extraordinary sacrifice on the part of so many other Board members that came before you, as you well know. They deserve thanks, because what we have done is incredibly important. I refer to our district as a lighthouse district, not because we're greater than others, but because we have the courage sometimes in the darkness to find a way to do what is right, even when it is difficult. When I think about our teachers and what they endured over this past year, how many changes they went through, and our foresight the summer prior to get them as ready as we could, all of that work required a commitment to every child, to valuing every child, that doesn't happen because of my vision. It happens because so many of us have said out loud by action and deed, every child matters. So, I am humbled to be able to continue this work, because to me, this is absolutely the most fulfilling thing I could be doing with my life. So, five years might or might not be enough, but I'm honored to be able to stay and continue our journey together. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. With that, I'll move on to the administrative report. I will take that on consent unless anyone objects. Item one, acceptance of gift from Combe Inc. Item two, acceptance of gift from Samuel J. Preston PTA. Item three, acceptance of gift from Retail Business Services Stop &amp; Shop A+ Awards Program. Item four, approval of CSC CPSC Minutes. Item five, approval of CSC CPSC Recommendations. Item six, CSC CPSC Annual Review. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report?
Motion.
Second? Questions or comments? On behalf of the entire Board, I would like to thank Combe Inc. for their very generous donation of hand sanitizer, which has been used in copious amounts, and I'm sure will continue to be. I also want to thank the Preston PTA for their generous donation. We're lucky to have such wonderful PTAs that we partner with, and also the Stop &amp; Shop Awards Program. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. With that, I'll move on to the finance report. I'll take that on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. Item one, 2020-21 appropriation transfers. Item two, 2021-22 appropriation transfers. Item three, Treasurer's Report, June 2021. Item four, 2021-22 school lunch fund budget. Item five, approval of the agreement between Harrison CSD and Johnston's for yearbook services, Harrison High School. Item six, contract award, RFB number 21 slash 22 dash 03 Roofing Services. Item seven, contract award, RFB number 21 slash 22 dash 13 Coach Bus Service for school field, school field and athletic trips, sorry. Item eight, contract extension with Susan Merrim's Food Service Consultant. Item nine, contract extension, RFB 2021 dash 14 Musical Instrument Repair. Item 10, authorization to purchase athletic supplies and equipment from Flag House. Item 11, authorization to piggyback on Byron Hills School District Bid Award for janitorial supplies. Item 12, authorization to piggyback on Southampton Union Free School District Bid Award for school supplies and materials. Item 13, authorization to participate in the New York Long Island Cooperative Bid. Item 14, authorization to purchase technology and telecommunications- Item 14, authorization to purchase technology and telecommunications product lines and services from E+ Technology, Inc. Item 15, authorization to piggyback on Southampton Union Free School District bid award for science supplies and materials. Item 16, sale of vehicle. Item 17, disposal of supplies. Item 18, disposal of equipment. Item 19, 2020-21 retirement contribution reserve subfund. Do I have a motion to approve the finance report?
Motion.
Second? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. That concludes the July 28, 2021 regular business meeting. Our next meeting will be August 11, 2021, here at Lewis M. Klein Middle School. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are closed. Thank you.